Okay. All right, I call the regular meeting of the Millikan Board of Trustees for September 25th, 2024 to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, will the Town Clerk please call roll?
Trustee Beckman?
Here.
Trustee Lane?
Here.
Trustee Nix?
Here.
Trustee Orkut?
Here.
Trustee Wakeman?
Here.
Mayor Protem Dean?
Here.
Mayor Austin?
Here.
Thank you. All right, we have a proclamation for Suicide Prevention Month next. Whereas suicide is a complex issue that can affect anyone regardless of age, gender, race, orientation, income level, or background, and whereas over 48,000 deaths annually are attributed to suicide, with suicide rates in Colorado ranking sixth nationally, and 66 lives lost to suicide in Weld County during 2023. Come on in. And whereas being a trusted person to turn to when someone is feeling isolated or hopeless is one of the most important things we can do to prevent suicide. And whereas actively challenging stigma around mental health and building skills that increase the likelihood of someone feeling safe to open up without fear of shame or judgment is the first step. And whereas because of the collaborative prevention and education efforts of North Range Suicide Education and Support Services, S E S S, Imagine Zero of Weld County, numerous survivors and community partners hope exists in Millikan. And whereas North Front Range Behavioral Health Suicide Education and Support Services Program supports those who have lost someone to suicide and provides education to Millikan residents that help build critical suicide prevention skills. And whereas September is recognized as National Suicide Awareness and Prevention Month with the goal of promoting awareness surrounding suicide prevention resources and support available to us and our community. And whereas we encourage all residents to learn how to talk about mental health, research suicide prevention resources available nationally and throughout Weld County, check in on the well-being of your family, friends, and neighbors, and share genuine appreciation for the people in your life by any gesture you deem appropriate. Now therefore, we, the Board of Trustees, do hereby proclaim September 2024 as Suicide Awareness and Prevention Month in the town of Millikan, and call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of behavioral health and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all citizens. And we have an individual here who would like to speak on this proclamation. If you could please approach the podium and state your name for the record and address, I would appreciate it.
Good evening. My name is Alyssa Selby. I'm the program coordinator for our Suicide Education and Support Services team at North Range Behavioral Health. In addition, I also facilitate our Imagine Zero of Weld County Suicide Prevention Coalition. I won't take too much of your time here tonight. I really just want to take this opportunity to briefly just say thank you. Thank you for caring and for supporting suicide prevention. We recognize that it is not necessarily a fun topic to talk about, however, we also recognize that suicide prevention is everybody's business. When we take the time to be vulnerable and have these conversations with our friends, family, coworkers, and neighbors, we actually normalize mental health, and we make it okay to ask for help. So again, I just want to say thank you. It's the communities like yours here today that truly do make me optimistic towards a brighter future with fewer suicides.
Thank you very much. And thank you for coming down. Any questions from the board? No? Okay. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Okay, let's check in. All right, next up on the agenda is citizens' comment. Do we have any citizens that would like to discuss anything with the board?
We need to approve the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. Wanted to jump right in there. Does anyone have any additions or deletions to the agenda? Oh. Hearing none, I'll take a motion. I motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Town Clerk, please call for a vote.
Trustee Lane?
Yes.
Trustee Nix?
Yes.
Trustee Orkut?
Yes.
Trustee Wakeman?
Yes.
Trustee Beckman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Dean?
Yes.
Mayor Austin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you for keeping me on track, Town Clerk. You're doing your job. All right, now do we have any citizens' comments? Anybody that would like to address the board?
I don't want to address the board specifically to this subject.
No, that's okay. We're past that one now. We're back on track, so. No, you're fine. Please approach the podium and state your name and address for the record, please. She can go up with you. It's fine. We're not that formal.
Hello, my name is Benjamin Cole. I live at 116 South Dorothy Avenue in Millikan, which is right over by the TBK Bank. So my reason for coming down here is not necessarily a complaint, it was just an idea. So about three months ago, I was watching a documentary with regards to Monument, Colorado, and the mayor down there was explaining how the immigration problem with regards in Denver, they were afraid of getting that immigration put upon them themselves. And so the city council or the city trustees, and they're about 11,000, 12,000 population group, which is about the size of Milliken, about 10,000, give or take a few. He had explained to the interviewer with regards to passing a city law or city ordinance in regards to just declaring that we are not a sanctuary city, and declaring that Monument would not be receiving any buses with regards to illegal immigration. Now, I realize that we are much further from Denver than, let's say, Monument is, and I understand that it's not an issue necessarily here, but I want to propose the idea to the city trustee board as well as the mayor to possibly, maybe if you guys would want to draft up a city ordinance as a formal declaration saying, we are not a sanctuary city, if that is something that you agree with, and to say that we would not be willing to take buses or accept busloads of immigrants, illegal migrants, if they were to come here, whether cities of Denver or Longmont or whoever would just decide to ship them here. So I thought his resolve, even though the mayor in Monument said that they weren't equipped to handle anything like that anyways, and obviously we aren't either, but to have that declaration out to the people, the citizens, so they know like, okay, our city council's not with this migration issue, regardless of whether we can actually do something or do or do nothing, having a declaration, I think, is important, whether that comes in the form of a formal declaration or a city ordinance. I just think it would be important for the city council and the mayor to just think about this and see if there's something, ideas where you can draft it up in a way or model the law and ordinance down in Monument. I think that'd be really important. One other issue to address, so as you can see, I have a five-year-old daughter, and we go to the parks here all the time. And the issues I find, one issue is the bathrooms. And during the May to, let's say, now season, from, let's say, Memorial Day to Labor Day, the bathrooms are usually open, but you have nice days in March and you have nice days in April. And the bathroom, for example, down at Thompson Recreation Area is closed, and she's five and she has to go to pee, and so do many, many other kids. And so this would be a little long, a little longer the lines of a complaint, but I wish there could be some more bathrooms, whether bathrooms or porta-potties. Now, I understand that in the cold, the pipes will freeze, so I understand that. That's a legitimate concern. So maybe a porta potty where you don't have to have the pipes actively on during the winter, but it'd be nice to have some better access to bathrooms, especially when you're at an age where, yes, you can hold it, but there's accidents that happen, and little kids don't have the self-control that adults do. So that's all I wanted to speak about, so.
Well, I appreciate you coming down. Administrator Powell, could you please follow up on the timeframe of the bathrooms, and is there any issue in particular with having them open longer? And let us know. Thank you. And then we'll take up discussing the what Monument City did. We have discussed it previously.
Okay.
And we have acknowledged that we do not have services for a busload of immigrants.
Yes.
But I also recognize that it's happened in other towns, so.
Yes.
We'll take up having another discussion on that.
That'd be great. I mean, when I heard about that, I was like, oh, this is a great idea, even if you obviously don't have facilities to deal with those things, to have that declaration for the people like, oh, my city is against this sanctuary city thing, it gives you some sort of, like, internal confidence, regardless of what the exterior is, it gives you an internal confidence that the city council, the mayor, we're not going to accept this. And so I appreciate your time, and thank you to the city board members and the mayor.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming. Anybody else that would like to? Very independent, isn't she? Okay, there we go. All righty. So public comment is now closed. We'll go to the meeting minutes. Is there any discussion or comments on the minutes of September 11th, 2024? Hearing none, I'll take a motion.
I move to accept the meetings from September 11th, 2024 as presented.
I second. Town Clerk, please call for a vote.
Trustee Nix?
Yes.
Trustee Orkut?
Yes.
Trustee Wakeman?
Yes.
Trustee Beckman?
Yes.
Trustee Lane?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Dean?
Yes.
Mayor Austin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the paid list of bills for August 2024? September 2024. No questions? Okay, we must be doing something right. So we will move on now to the Town Administrator's Report. Administrator Powell?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just quickly, so our Parks Department, they're putting in Earlac Lake Pump Station. There's a lot of ground that was disturbed during the installation going on there, so our Parks Department has been preparing the ground with composts and such in order to reseed it since it's a noticeable site right along Alice Avenue, so just to get it looking well for next year. There's irrigation in there already. They did have to fix some irrigation because whenever you have equipment like that go in, something's going to happen. So anyway, they will be seeding this area once the compost is installed, and I believe they're finishing it up today, so I hadn't had a chance to go out there and look at it. I do want to point out, the town received petitions from residents who live in the 100 block of East Holly Street. They are requesting repairs to sidewalks in this area. So I had spoken to a lady on the phone, they hadn't made any phone calls to us, but as residents, they put together a formal petition requesting us to fix the sidewalks. It's a newer area, it's not that old, but it's very apparent that when the sidewalks were placed, it was probably done during inclement weather or too much water was used in the concrete or something. Director Rabus did go out and investigate the sidewalks, and he does concur with what the residents found. So currently for 2025, we have $50,000 in our budget for concrete repairs, which would allow us to fix about half the block, and then we could possibly do the next half the following year. So it would be about a $100,000 project to do the entire area. I attended the Millikan Johnstown Community Foundation meeting on Thursday, September 19th. There were representatives from Weld Community Foundation, Johnstown Council and staff, Library District, and the School District. It's really great conversations, and also the Rec District, I should say. Great conversations took place about needs for both the communities. So we're going to look into something like that, where Weld Community Foundation could perhaps help us get maybe something going at some point in time. Amy Talent was there. She's a business owner, she's a real estate broker, so she's putting together a summary of the meeting, and I'll share that with you once I receive it. But it was really kind of nice for people to be able to speak about things that they see going on in their community that perhaps something like this could help with. Lastly, but to me most importantly, the celebration of life service for Officer McPeters was a wonderful tribute to his life. I have to say, the event center was full, standing room only, I don't know how deep they were. But it really showed you how much people loved and cherished Officer Peters. He will be somebody that I think we will always miss his presence here and as a school resource officer for our community. Chief Garcia and the officers there represented Milliken very well during this difficult time, so I just had to speak about Mick.
Yes. Thank you, Cheryl. Took the words out of my mouth. It was a very moving ceremony, and as you had said, it was notable, the large number of people in attendance. Many of them were from Milliken that came out. In addition, I want to thank Chief West for his playing of the bagpipes. Yes. During the ceremony, this is the part that I broke down at. And of course, the last call for him. So I thank McPeters for his dedicated 19 years of service as an officer, sergeant, and well-loved school resource officer. Any questions of Cheryl? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. First item listed under the consent agenda is consideration and adoption of Resolution 2024, a resolution to change the Board of Trustees' regular scheduled meeting dates from November 27th to November 25th and December 25th to December 23rd. And there's also a termination letter with the Gallagher Benefit Services. I'll take a motion on the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Town Clerk, please call for a vote.
Trustee Orkut?
Yes.
Trustee Wakeman?
Yes.
Trustee Beckman?
Yes.
Trustee Lane?
Yes.
Trustee Nix?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Dean?
Yes.
Mayor Austin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Action Agenda. Consideration to authorize the mayor to sign a construction agreement with Front Range Concrete LLC, presenting as John Rabus, Streets and Facilities Director.
Good evening. There's a resident that has a wheelchair-bound daughter that would greatly benefit from a continuous sidewalk to Milliken Middle School along the north side of Forest Street from Irene Avenue to Josephine. Currently, we have gaps in the sidewalk that is there, and also what sidewalk is there does not meet ADA standards. And then the second part of this agreement is some asphalt patching and sidewalk replacement. A lot of the patching is over off of Bula Avenue and Cherry Street, where the water department was locating a water service line, and within this agreement also has the sidewalk replacement over at 1171 Norma Court.
Does it include sidewalk replacement in Colony Point on the corner?
Yes.
What caused that debacle?
The ground's heaving.
I'm sorry, the what?
The ground is heaving.
Ground.
So, once a contractor gets in here, we'll have to go and remove that concrete, then go in and remove that soil, and come back and put road base and recompact it.
So is compaction issued?
No, the ground's actually heaving.
Oh, the ground heaved, okay. I didn't understand the word heaving. Sorry, thank you.
Not a problem.
Questions from the board? Trustee Wakeman?
I did have a quick question that we had that one individual that emailed.
And that's included in here.
Okay. Yes. That was just my only question, I think, is it?
And I will say, Director Rabus has been trying to get concrete companies to respond. Currently, because the project is not large, and a lot of this is a busy time of year for them, the summer months, and especially now when you're heading towards time of the year that you can't do concrete, so he.
It's quid pro quo.
Yeah, so he's really been diligent about trying to get a company to come in in order to do this, so he finally located one that's good.
Timely, yeah.
And so we can get going on this.
I've got a quick question. The concrete work that got postponed last year because of the extra expense for flooding, I haven't heard or seen anything updated on why those projects didn't get accomplished this year.
Because this project here, you know, because we're able to help the actual resident that we knew could use, you know, some assistance in getting her daughter over to the middle school, so we decided to use that funding, you know, to help out the resident right now, and we'll have to come back and catch up on the following years with the other project.
Okay, so there's still?
Oh, there's still multiple years of projects.
Okay. All right.
Near-ending work. Trustee Nix, questions?
Did you reach out to the shapers and let them know that it's being taken care of?
The shapers are?
Anorma.
Anorma? Have you spoken to her?
Yes, I sure have.
Wonderful, thank you. Trustee Beckman?
No questions, I just wanted for the record that it is in the budget.
It is.
Trustee Orkut?
No questions.
Mayor Protem Dean?
No questions.
You already answered mine, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, if there's no further questions from the board, I'll take a motion on the matter.
I move to authorize the mayor to sign a construction agreement with Front Range Concrete LLC for sidewalk replacement and asphalt patching for $57,238.60.
Second.
Town Clerk, please call for a vote.
Trustee Wakeman?
Yes.
Trustee Beckman?
Yes.
Trustee Lane?
Yes.
Trustee Nix?
Yes.
Trustee Orkut?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Dean?
Yes.
Mayor Austin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the consideration of a proposed settlement regarding case number 2024 CV 030327 filed in Weld County District Court by Milliken Investors LLC against the town of Milliken, presenting as Matt Gold, Town Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Austin. The board is pretty familiar with this situation, just to give a brief background, and this is all laid out in the memos, so I won't be as detailed as was laid out there. This relates to, I'm looking at Trustee Orkut, do you want to recuse yourself?
Right, I was waiting for somebody to ask. Yes, I need to recuse myself from the matter.
Okay.
Thanks.
So this relates to the development known as Meadow Farms. The dispute revolves around certain improvements that the developer was obligated under a development agreement to complete, but never did, particularly landscape improvements. The town staff has been after the developer to get these improvements completed for quite some time, and ultimately, the developer filed a lawsuit against the town, arguing that it shouldn't be compelled to do that based on two basic theories. One was statute of limitations theories, in other words, the town had not sued them soon enough, we never sued them, and also based on some interpretation of the development agreement, arguing that the bond was not intended to cover the landscape improvements. Anyway, that's some of the background here. Staff representatives, Pepper McLennahan, Carrie Reinbarger, Cheryl Powell, and myself met with the mediator on Monday of this week, and this case was mediated. The mediator went back and forth between the staff representatives as well as two homeowners from the area that participated on the town side, went back and forth between those individuals and, on the other side, the developer and its attorney. And ultimately, after a few hours, it came to the point where an offer was made of $225,000 to be paid to the town by the end of January 2025. Staff formed a consensus that that is a settlement that we can recommend to the board. We are recommending as well that any allocation of those funds be put off until they are actually received, specifically any allocation between costs and improvements to be completed by the town for the benefit of those homeowners in the area. There are also some estimates that were produced as recently, well, actually, one of them was produced after the mediation was over, of costs that might be incurred. There's a range of estimates, they address a variety of, they address some different improvements that might be built. That's a summary of what's before you, the resolution would approve the settlement agreement and also delay any action on allocating the funds, and it provides some additional instruction and authority to the town attorney and staff. So happy to answer any questions.
Okay, questions, starting with Trustee Beckman?
I don't have any questions.
Trustee Nix?
No questions.
Trustee Lane?
No questions.
Trustee Wakeman?
No questions.
Okay, so I understand that the mediation costs were about $600, is that accurate, or thereabouts?
The cost of the mediator to the town, I am estimating to be about $600. His rate is 300 per hour, and it's split equally between the parties. Four hours is probably more than what we actually used, but it's approximately correct. Actually, with some follow-up work, there could be a little more than that, but that's a pretty close estimate, yes.
And the approximate attorney fees?
So there are two numbers that I want to share with the board. Our office started keeping track of attorney's fees on its efforts to enforce the development agreement in approximately June of 2023, when the notice of default was issued. And then also, we separately tracked fees that were involved with the litigation itself, starting in mid-April. So the fees associated with the litigation itself through yesterday for our office, and this would include also filing expenses, were $26,483.05. And the fees prior to litigation in simply trying to elicit compliance by the developer were $11,616.20.
Okay, and the residents really wanted the equine trail put in that was promised at the time they bought houses out there. How close to, where is Pepper? How close do we think this $274,000 estimate for the equine trail is?
We received, we reached out to one landscape company that responded.
Could you, could you come up? Thank you.
Earlier this spring in May, I reached out to a couple of landscape companies to get some estimates on what it would cost to put in some landscaping as well as the equestrian trail. We only got one estimate. We only got one estimate. And it was not broken out by the landscape materials and plantings and irrigation versus the equine trail. So we reached out, actually reached out during the mediation and sent them an email asking for a breakout just for the equestrian trail. And this money would be enough based on that estimate. That said, I believe that with the cost of this, we would need to go out for bid with an RFP and that type of thing. So be aware of that, that this is, would not be a final figure.
Okay, because I'm looking at the landscape quote from one person. It looks like you went out to them during mediation for the, coming in at 134,000 kind of gives us an idea, and there was such a wide range, I kind of wondered. But I see they also didn't include the weed mat.
Right, and that's, that's a question that will resolve, but there was some concerns about whether the weight of the horses, the horse's hooves and that type of thing would degrade that fabric and kind of render it, you know, its usefulness. That's all to be determined, but that's, you're correct, without any matting under the crusher fines.
And do you think the residents would be okay with not being reimbursed the $5,000 for the monument that we hoped to get them, but if it can't, can't be reimbursed, do you think they're going to be okay with that?
I think we'd have to reach back out to them. That was kind of anticipated in the negotiation, but I don't know that there were any specific direction of how that, of how the town would allocate those funds when it's received.
That's correct.
Right, we don't know.
We did use different numbers to try to come up with settlement proposals during the mediation, and that was one of them. I, I would say in the end, the amount that was approved was approved as a lump sum with a clear understanding, and this was specifically discussed with the homeowners that appeared, that the allocation would not be made yet.
Right.
And, and items that were included in various efforts to calculate a number were the equine trail, attorney's fees, the sign, the original landscaping, water. But it was very clear that the allocation would happen at a later time.
Right. Board members have any additional thoughts?
So, so we're limited to the amount, to the $225,000. So whatever's done has to equal back with attorney's fees.
Well, that's all the money we're receiving.
Yeah.
Any other money would have to come from someplace else.
And that's the highest they'll go?
Excuse me?
That's the highest they'll go?
This is the amount that was approved by the negotiator. So it would be a, well, I guess the answer really is yes. That's the number. That's the number. Now, if we, if the board decides not to approve that, that settlement, the, the board is not bound to accept this settlement. But it was, it was something that was reached with board's representatives, and the mediator felt like this was a good offer. And he is a good mediator. He is very talented at establishing rapport with everybody involved and also putting a lot of pressure on everybody involved. So he, he gets concessions. And I think that this, that the town representatives felt like this was a, and I, I don't want to speak for any of the others that were there, but there, I feel like there was a consensus that this is something we can recommend to the board.
I think they did a good job, and I think maybe we can, the landscaping that requires water, I think that can be put off a little bit until maybe we get some non-pot out that way, or the price of CBT goes down or something like that, it might be a little bit more advantageous. But.
Well, and, and at this point, even if we go back to mediation, we're not guaranteed to get any additional funds, but we will incur more expense.
That is absolutely true.
Are we responsible for, once this is accepted, for doing all of the improvements regardless of the money that we receive?
Yes. One of the goals that we agreed with of the mediator was to separate the parties. The idea of having a lingering arrangement where the developer would be responsible for completing things, he made a pretty strong argument to staff that that was not a desirable approach.
And how, how short is this going to be of accomplishing that?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure I quite understand the question.
The, the 225 that we're going to receive, and after you take out some of the expenses we've had, how much shortfall is that going to be in accomplishing all of the needed improvements?
Well, so there's, did you want to comment, Cheryl?
Well, I was just going to say, until we receive additional bids on, on this project, especially for the equine trail, which was one of the things that the homeowners, really all the homeowners really wanted, you know, we don't, we don't know what residual money will be left after that's accomplished outside of some expenses that we've already incurred.
If we measure this against the original proposal, it will not complete those improvements. But, but we did get, during our, our research, we did determine that the homeowners don't place a lot of value on a lot of the originally approved landscaping. So this, this does not, on the other hand, given the estimate that came in from Ace of Blades after we approved the number, I think we're kind of optimistic we can get that trail done. And that's a very good thing.
I understand it looks like we'll get the trail done and maybe a little more, but are we going to have additional obligations beyond that amount of money?
To the HOA, is that what you're asking? To, to the HOA, to the residents, is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Are we under?
The town, no. No.
Okay.
Okay, so it would be on the, it would be on the.
I, maybe this relates to the allocation of the money, and these are questions that we can deal with at that point. So do, maybe this is the question. If, if we spend less than the, the full amount for the, either on expenses or on benefits to the town, to the homeowners, what do we do with that money? And that's a question we're probably going to have to look at closely.
That's, I don't have a problem looking at that question. My, I just, and it's not, I just want to be clear if we're going to encounter additional expenses in addition to the 225,000.
If we're under any obligation to complete?
Yes.
X, Y, and Z.
I, I don't believe that we are.
If we use all of the funds for the equine trail and the landscaping isn't done at all, is the town then paying for the landscaping?
No, I don't believe that there's an obligation. The contract was solely between the town and the developers.
So we, we don't have an obligation to the property owners to complete additional work if the money doesn't cover it?
That is my opinion. Yes.
If that, if that's the case, I suggest that if there's any leftover, you beef up the, the equine trick, the equine trail, you add more.
There won't be.
More rock.
I think that's a discussion for a later time.
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm just saying that if that's.
I think we ask them what they, you know, I think we involve them in the decision-making. Maybe they don't need such a big, or, you know what I mean?
And we have, I mean, we, we went into this with.
I mean, when it's like time.
Time to do it.
Time to execute.
Yes, and you know, so, and I have to say too, that the two homeowners that were here were satisfied with the outcome. And.
They're going to be happy with what we accomplish with that money?
Which, right now, yeah, it's, right now, they sit at zero. And so getting this done, especially the equine trail, was their, you know, of utmost importance to them.
And, and honestly, I think they appreciated our effort to be transparent with them.
I understand. I just think we need to be clearly aware of where, what our obligations are. That's why I'm asking these questions. I'm not necessarily opposed to it, but I want it clearly understood as we consider this.
I'm glad you asked that, because that's actually clarification that I didn't know I needed.
So kind of in, in addition though, if you guys would have to come back to us to ask for additional monies to be spent if it were outside of this allocated amount, correct?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, so we would have to approve it at a later time, yeah.
I understand, I just wanted to know.
Yeah, no, what, what the expectation was.
Yeah, we'll have to come back and ask for approval to do any of this project, because it's going to exceed our purchasing authority.
And, and I think it's worth pointing out that there is a context here, and the context is it's a failed developer and it's a disputed contract. And this represented a settlement of disputed issues. And so the original contract said what it said about the amounts to be spent, and actually, we're getting more than the face amount of, of what they, they budgeted. At one point in time, we discussed escalating the amounts that would have been spent to a current number. We're probably higher than that. We're very close, but probably higher than that. So I, I, you know, guaranteeing that there's no responsibility is a tricky thing, but no, I don't believe that the town owes any other duty than, to those, to spend any other money.
I appreciate that clarification. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment from the board? Final comments? Questions, concerns?
Nope.
Okay. All right, I'll take a motion on the matter.
I move to approve Resolution 24-22 of the Town of Milliken, Colorado, approving the settlement agreement and mutual release with Milliken Investors LLC.
I second. Town clerk, please call for a vote.
Trustee Beckman?
Yes.
Trustee Lane?
Yes.
Trustee Nix?
Yes.
Trustee Wakeman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Dean?
Yes.
Mayor Austin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any board reports to come before us tonight? No board members with reports? Okay, the remaining reports are written. Is there any further business to come before the board? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Opposed? We're done. Thank you, everybody, for coming down.